It is now twelve minutes after ten and at the request of the Council President Ruth Galanter, we would like to ask all council members to please report to the council chambers. It's not too long of an agenda. Mr. Burnson is here to save the day. So council members, would you please make your way to the council chambers? This is a first quorum call. So it is ten nineteen. We need two for our quorum. Council members who are in their offices, would you please kindly make your way to the council chambers in order that we may begin the meeting. This is a second quorum call. We have eight members present. Alters, if you could please make your way to the council chamber. We need you for a quorum. Alters, if you could please make your way to the council chamber. We need you for a quorum. Okay, here we go. Would the council please come to order? This is a meeting of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles this Tuesday, April tenth, two thousand one. Councilman Rudy Savornish Jr., Assistant President Pro Tem, joining us in just a moment, will be President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter, who is concluding a Commerce Committee meeting. This council meeting is currently being viewed live on LA City View, Channel thirty-five. The meeting will be repeated this evening at seven-thirty, and all council meetings for the week are repeated on Sundays beginning at ten a.m. Mr. Clerk, first item of business.
Roll call. Burnson, Chick, Fuhrer, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Miscausi, Pacheco, Padilla, Really Thomas, Florence, Wax, Walters, Forrow, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, so ordered.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be continued. Item number six, a request from the Building and Safety Department in Council District Three to have that matter continued till April twenty-fourth.
Is there any objection to continuing item number six until April twenty-fourth? Seeing no objection, so ordered.
Item number twenty-two, a request from Council District Ten to continue that matter to April seventeenth.
There any objection to continuing that item until April seventeenth? Seeing no objection, so ordered.
Item number thirty-five, a request from Council District Six to continue that matter to April seventeenth.
Any objection to that continuance? Okay, without objection, so ordered. Next item?
Mr. President, items number one through five on the regular agenda, items notice for public hearing?
Okay, I do not have any cards for items one through five. Is there any person in the audience that wishes to be heard on items one through five? Seeing none, we have a motion. Public comment period is closed. Mr. Clerk, is there any council member that wants to be heard on items one through five? Not, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on one through five and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Next.
Items seven through nine on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number eight requires a motion, and as much as there's two on one file, I believe both may be adopted.
Okay. We have these items before us. I believe the public comment has been held. Are there any council members that want to be heard on any of these items?
Seven through nine?
And we need a motion on eight, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct. A motion from the floor is required.
Okay, Mr. Burnson moves on number eight. So we have all the items before us. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Fourth with on nine and eight. Okay, next items.
Mr. President, items number ten through thirty-eight on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. We've already acted on items twenty-two and thirty-five.
Okay, we have items ten through thirty-eight before us. We do have cards on twenty-five. We'll call that special. We have a card on twenty-seven. We'll call that special. We have a card on thirty-five. We will call that special. Thirty-five, we continue?
Thirty-five has been continued till April seventeenth.
Okay, there's a request to send item twenty back to committee. Is there any objection to the request by Ms. Walters to send that back to committee? Seeing no objection, we will send item twenty back to committee. I do not believe we are at thirty-nine yet, Mr. Clerk?
No, you're currently on between ten and thirty-eight. Twenty has been acted on, twenty-two and thirty-five have been acted on, twenty-five and twenty-seven have been called special.
Okay, are there any other specials, items ten through thirty-eight, with the exception of twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty, which has been sent back to committee? There's a request to send item thirty-four to the planning committee. Is there any objection to that request by Mr. Burnson? Can you see no objection? Thirty-four will go to the planning committee. Are there any other specials, council members, ten through thirty-eight? Okay, we'll call twenty-two special. Okay, any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on the remaining items and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved.
Okay, next item.
Item thirty-nine on the supplemental agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, item thirty-nine. Ms. Chick.
Madam President, I was going to ask for this to be held over one day. We have Recreation and Parks Department that is not able to answer my questions about how they would implement enforcement.
And you hope that by tomorrow they will be able to?
They're working on it right now.
Okay. Is there any objection to, Mr. Padilla?
Well, I was gonna call it special. I have no problem holding it over for a day.
I was gonna call it special. I have no problem holding it over for a day. Do we have concerns about quorum for tomorrow?
We always have concerns.
Oh, well, no, no, that's important to know.
What's the schedule for tomorrow?
You are scheduled to have a quorum tomorrow for a brief period of time. For a whole 15 minutes?
I see. No, is 10 the maximum that's expected?
10 is the maximum.
All right. Well, what do you want to do, Laura?
Well, maybe we better have the discussion.
Let's hold it on the desk.
Okay.
Let's start with that, and we'll see if we can get through the rest of this. Yes, Ms. Walters?
That came through Arts Health and Humanities Committee, and several things have come up, and rather than, subsequent to the meeting, so rather than trying to rush it through this morning, I would ask that it be continued till next Tuesday.
All right. Okay, now...
Hold it.
Let's hold it on the desk for the moment. Let's see if, but we may wind up either continuing it or sending it back to committee if you feel that that's appropriate.
Yes, you send it back to committee or hold it till next Tuesday because there's obviously...
Gentlemen?
There's obviously information that is available now that was not available at the time the committee met. So if we can hold this until Tuesday, then I think we can get all of it ironed out.
Okay, now, what's the, you're not here on Tuesday. Are you here at all next week?
No, I'm not. Just if we could just hold it on the desk, and it might work to hold it till next Tuesday, if I could just talk to the department.
Let's hold it on the desk for the moment so we can do the rest of the agenda.
Certainly, I'm willing to hold it longer than Wednesday if that's what my colleague wants, but I'm just saying it might have to be...
Longer than that, okay.
I have no problem with holding it longer than that.
Okay. I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna achieve agreement here after a while. Let's try the next item.
Items number 40 and 41 on the supplemental agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right, we do not appear to have any cards on items 40 or 41. Members of the council? Okay, open the roll on items 40 and 41. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Which brings us to?
Item number 25, call it special.
Okay, item 25. We have somebody who wants to be heard, Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, everybody, and I want to say I'm sick of seeing all these commercials on TV. It's nice to see you all in person, though, but I know all about you, and nice to meet your kids, all of you that are running for office. Here it is, Election Day, and I have never yet seen any of these clowns I'm running against for mayor, except Joel Wax, be here in City Council, and he's one clown that has to be here, but I like him anyway. He's a mensch. Happy Pesach to all my Jewish friends. May you all find the afikom. Okay, item number 25. I support item number 25. I want to speak about E, F, and G very, very briefly. Stop the Violence Block Party, sponsored by the LAPD, Harbor Community Police Station, April 21st, 2001. I definitely want to stop the violence. We all know I support the LAPD. Item 25F, the 14th Annual ILWU Propeller Club Seafood Fest, sponsored by the ILWU and the Port of LA on June 13th. Of course, I support the propeller club and seafood. I love seafood, though it's not kosher, and I never, a propeller I didn't like, and I want to say I support that. And 25G, 8th Annual Take Out Our Daughters to Work Day. Well, if I had a daughter, I would take her out to work, and I want to say I definitely support Take Out to Take Our Daughters to Work Day, sponsored by the Commission on the Status of Women, and you know, women are very important to me and to my mother, a great feminist. I studied with Angela Davis at Brandeis University. I've studied by Angelo, and although I may not be a Democrat, I support the rights of women in the workplace. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 25 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Nothing happened here, did you? There we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, that's approved. Item 27 is next, right? Mr. Green?
Boy, am I glad I shut up today. Item number 27, by the way, where is Soboroff and Hahn of Villarreal? If you want to be mayor of LA, you might show up at city council meetings because the 15 of you, or 13 of you in this case, really run the city. The mayor is just a rubber stamp, but I don't want to get political. Item number 27 on Election Day, item number 27, sponsored by Mr. Mishakowski and Pacheco. By the way, I saw Pacheco having coffee this morning at Bob's Big Boy. I didn't bother him, but Cindy, you are endorsed by the LA Times this morning. Congratulations. Reaffirms the council action of May 15th, 1998, declaring the Hollywood Farmers Market a special event. Now, the Hollywood Farmers Market is where I go every Sunday, along with famous fathers Paul Fleiss and George DiCaprio, and we buy fruit, that's right. We buy fruit at the Farmers Market, and Mike Wu, who may be here in a few days, in a few weeks, helped develop the Hollywood Farmers Market. I go there every Sunday, no matter what. I buy fruit there, and all you that are in the Hollywood area, I invite you to come to the Hollywood Farmers Market at Ivar, near Sunset, not to be confused with the other Farmers Market at Third and Fairfax. The Hollywood Farmers Market is great, and I hope that we reaffirm the council action of May 15th, 1998, because the Hollywood Farmers Market is indeed a special event. Thank you. I am Melrose Larry Green. I want to say hi to all my friends out there watching in TV land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. That closes the public hearing. Open the roll on item 27. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved, which brings us back to?
Item 39.
Item 39. Where's Ms. Chick? She's still working on it. Laura, we're on item 39 again.
I think we need staff.
It's beginning to look like we're gonna continue this item, doesn't it?
No, I think staff was ready to come forward with some kind of discussion, but I don't know, and I'm generally unhappy that the item has come forward in this way.
Go poke them in the ribs or something. I don't see any staff rushing forward.
Part of the problem, Madam President, is there is, time is of some significance here in getting this ordinance in place in terms of proper management of a Recreation and Parks facility and also liability issues, but it should never have been handled in this way by the department.
Okay, Mr. Deaton, are you prepared to talk to us about this, or are you just gonna answer questions? Can we, can those of you kind of on the fringes here?
I think Wreckin' Parks, Wreckin' Parks and the city attorney should join me, but...
Are they here?
Yes. They're working on some matters, Wreckin' Parks.
They're trying to sort it out?
We have a situation in which, we have a skate park that we have opened, and what we require is an ordinance in order to set, in some fashion, that somebody, either the ordinance set the hours, or the Wreckin' Parks Commission set the hours, one, and two, what is the age limits relative to people, to kids using the skate park? State legislation currently provides that 14 and older, we get some limited cap on our liability, and below 14, we don't. There is legislation pending to provide that for under 14. I think we have a situation today in which, discussing with the city attorney, that we should pass an ordinance, council should pass an ordinance with an urgency clause, that puts set hours and no age limit, but provide direction, not in the ordinance, because we don't have that ordinance ready, that says to Wreckin' Parks, anybody that under 14 requires a waiver from their parents. We do that in urgency. We get the hours, so there's, the Wreckin' Parks can enforce in the park. Secondly, that the council direct the city attorney to bring an ordinance back next week that addresses perhaps the commission being able to have limited ability to set the hours when it comes to summer, and that the ordinance requires Wreckin' Parks to have a waiver from children under 14 to limit our liability before they can use the park. That way, it protects us in the near term by providing set hours, indicating that a mechanism for administering the skate park in the short term, which this should have been done earlier, but wasn't, and also provides for it to be clarified next week, and then, thirdly, we should support the legislation to provide the same limited liability that the state provides for above 14 for below 14. So I think that does the maximum for us today, gives us next week to correct both the requiring the waiver by ordinance to be obtained by the Department of Recreation and Parks, and we can address the hours issue of who sets them, but we'll have, in this first ordinance, we'll have set hours.
Mr. Hernandez, well, Ms. Chick actually raised this earlier, so I think you ought to probably go first. All right, Ms. Walters?
This matter came up in committee, the first time it came up, and the age was 14, and I said, you'll never get it. Kids who are under 14, way under 14, are skateboarding. But it came back then without the ordinance, but without the limit, but the explanation from the city attorney about the liability issue. Now, if I recall correctly, Mr. Brown, at the last meeting last week, I asked you to bring two separate ordinances, one without the age limit and one with the age limit. And my interest in the age limit was for the liability, for the city to be indemnified to the largest extent possible, and the purpose of having two ordinances come forward was to see how the council felt about it as well as CLA. So what you're suggesting now is that neither one of the, or are you suggesting that neither one of these ordinances, Mr. Brown, has brought forward, will work today?
I'm suggesting the one that says no age limit, but an urgency clause, because we need hours set out there today, and that next week, and then, at the same time, the council tell Wreckin' Parks that they want waivers for anybody under 14, and that we provide that in ordinance next week, because that's not before us today. The city attorney bring an ordinance back next week, and then also, at that same time, where this ordinance that would be passed today would have set hours, Wreckin' Parks has concern about the summer and having some flexibility in hours. We can work that out between now and next week, and then, thirdly, that we, the council go on record of supporting the legislation to limit our liability for under 14 as well as it is above 14, and there's a bill pending, and we can support that bill.
Right. Well, Wreckin' Parks heretofore has had sunrise to sunset openings and closings for other parks, and I don't know what they have in mind here. Are they talking about doing it at nighttime, or is the skate park lighted? Is that possible?
My understanding is that the set hours start at noon or something, and maybe...
The set hours are noon to sunset on weekdays, and 9 to sunset on weekends and holidays.
And so, Mr. Deaton said they want to change this to have flexibility in when to close it, and my question is, why do they want it open beyond sunset? Are there lights there?
Ms. Walters, I'm Tony Corales. I'm the Assistant General Manager for Operations. Part of the thinking that we were under was that we have a number of skateboard parks in several council districts that we put in grants for. There is the possibility that some of those may be lit, and so we might be able to extend it past sunset if we put lights on those.
So you're talking about making the ordinance applicable to what may become, to the future?
What may become in the future, yes, ma'am.
Is it not sufficient that we could amend the ordinance at that time?
Well, we're gonna go ahead today, I'm recommending we go ahead today with the set hours, and that we sit down with Wreckin' Parks and see if next week is appropriate or not appropriate for those other hours.
All right, and Recreation and Parks needs to be directed, then, to put the personnel there to check on the waivers.
No question.
Because they, they're very reluctant to, and they say they can't enforce an age limit. They didn't want any age limit, or whatever.
Well, I think one is they need to enforce a late, an age limit, and they should have waivers for less than 14, because one lawsuit will pay for the supervision required to organize this in a fashion.
Exactly, and I'm trying to save the city some money. All right, I don't know whether that answers Mrs. Chick's questions.
Well, we're gonna find out, because there are four people who still want to talk. You're certainly welcome, thank you. Does Wreckin' Parks have the ability to make sure the parks, that when the skate parks are closed, they're really closed, and people aren't using them?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. That's why the hours then worry.
And that's the problem, that we're gonna come up, our perspective, with something that's unenforceable.
I might suggest that those grants, then, for other skateboard parks, if there isn't the ability to stop kids from going in at night and creating lawsuits for the city, which are just asking to be happened, then I think we have, we need to either, this is a good, this is a good part to resolve how we're gonna do this, and we need to be able to arrangers or whatever it is, because the cost of one lawsuit...
No, I think we're all with you on the cost of the lawsuit. My question was, and I see you looking concerned, is whether we have the ability to keep people out when they're not supposed to be there.
We use this park, I mean, and we didn't know what we didn't know. From now on, all of these parks are gonna be fenced, and they're gonna be controlled entry. The problem with Pedlo is that it's an open park right now, that anyone can go in. We're taking department money, and we're gonna put a fence in there in short order so that we can control entry. We're also gonna ask the commission to give us permission to issue identity cards and registration, so that we can register people, do IDs, do the waivers, but right now, we have a short-term problem that Pedlo cannot be secured, and people can jump a fence and use it anytime that they want, short of us putting their security there 24 hours a day.
No, I know. I watch what happens to the local school fences. All right, Ms. Chick, you're up next.
This whole conversation somewhat leaves me speechless, however, because... I knew that was an opening for someone. But, colleagues, it would have been, I think, not so difficult for some of these things to have been thought out and anticipated in advance. Pedlo Park is in the 3rd Council District, and not very long ago, when we opened it, I proudly stated that I had stepped to the post and was the first council member to say yes to the department to have a facility like this, and I knew why. We weren't all rushing, because there were problems and risks, because this is new, because there are issues to be addressed, and I was continually reassured by Recreation and Parks that all these things had been thought out and addressed, including to my questions about staffing and supervision. We knew that we had kids cutting through and climbing over the fence before it opened, and we knew we had kids running across Victory Boulevard in a very dangerous way, because when the parking barrier is down, they're parking in the residential neighborhoods on the north side of Victory and running across during closed hours. So while my questions have been answered in terms of probably what the best thing is to do today, it doesn't solve the problem at hand yet, and it, I don't think, still addresses the overall problem, because we need more facilities like this. And I very much want to hear back from Recreation and Parks, details of costs and other resources besides monetary in terms of staffing. I am concerned about how this gets enforced, and colleagues, I don't think we should be passing ordinances that can't be enforced. I'm concerned about the whole ID thing for age 14 and older, and this park has been open now for weeks for all ages. On opening day, there were all-age kids there, some with their parents and some without. I don't know why these things weren't thought out way in advance. I kept asking about research with other cities and how other cities seem to do it. So there is, there are problems right now as we speak at this park, and there is an urgency involved in moving in the right direction. The ordinance should have been in place before the park opened. At the ribbon cutting was when I was informed that there was an ordinance that needed to be put in place. So I'm willing to support the recommendations before us today as the best step for today, because this wasn't handled properly, but this needs more work, and very much need to understand about the enforcement. I thought someone was going to say up here, if we can't do it right, and we can't enforce, and we can't protect the city, we need to close the park. Wouldn't that be a horrific thing?
Okay. Mr. Hernandez?
Members of the council, Mr. Deaton, don't get me wrong, but we've had the term banded taxi cab drivers, banded auto mechanics, now we got banded skateboarders. Members of the council, the skateboarders are out there anyway, and in fact, they're using our sidewalks and our streets.
And in fact, they're using our sidewalks and our streets, particularly in certain corners and certain neighborhoods. I mean, I'm always trying to avoid hitting a skateboarder when I'm hanging a right turn in a particular place that they've adopted as their skateboard park. You know, when I was a kid, I used to go to the playground and play basketball, and I had to jump the fence. I used to play baseball, and I had to jump the fence, because it was closed. There was times when schools were basically closed for after-school sports, and the city's been contributing to trying to open schools for after-school activities. But this is not a criminal activity. The bottom line is, kids need to have activities. Now, what do we do now on a basketball court when a kid's 12 years old and he wants to play at an open park, or a handball court? What do we do?
We let him play.
And if there's nobody there?
They play unsupervised.
All right. I'm just trying to explain it, because it happens now. It's happening now. And I understand the concerns, and I understand the waiver to use the skateboard park, and I understand the need to have personnel there, I really do. And I want us to approach it that way.
Why don't you ask Wreckin' Parks what they do with the swimming pool?
No, I know what they do with swimming pools.
There's a difference between different sporting activities. You don't let, you don't let an individual jump the fence unsupervised and go swimming. You do, you try to, you control that activity. What we've done is set up an attractive nuisance, if you will, not, similar to a swimming pool, and it is not, I used to jump, I can relate to that very well. I used to be, I played basketball a lot of places I wasn't supposed to, and I played football a whole hell of a lot of places I wasn't supposed to.
Mr. Deaton, in my neighborhood, you can't go swimming, because there's no swimming pools.
Okay, I understand.
And that's why kids use skateboards. And again, maybe you and I don't use skateboards as prolific as they do, but they're very good at them. It's almost an extended set of legs.
Okay, her.
But I'm asking a different kind of question, because I think that the approach of not having them is more hazardous to our children than having them. The reason I think the supervision is important is because it is the kind of activity where a child will do extra to get to do. And we should have people who oversee it. I believe that is important. So where you place them and how you do that is important. But for us to say, "Kids aren't going to be skateboarding," is ridiculous. The reason we wanted to develop these parks is because they're doing it anyway, and they're doing it on our streets. They're doing it here in front of City Hall. They do it in the City Hall Mall on weekends. If you haven't seen them, I've seen them going down those stairs on their skateboards. And it's dangerous. And they're not allowed to do that, and that's why they do it there, because there's no place else for them to do them.
I'm just, two things. One is, I'm not suggesting, first off, I'm saying that the city should allow people under 14 to go do that. Secondly, I think that Wreckin' Parks should attempt in a very serious fashion to get waivers from their parents in order for that. We should seek legislation to have the same kind of protection that we have for above 14 as below 14. And the security issue is not, is after sunset, after sunset. It's at night when we have a situation. Secondly, I do believe, at least in my neighborhood, that the skateboarders think that all the curb cuts were made for them.
Right, and it doesn't matter what neighborhood we're from. Last point I want to make is, a lot of people think in terms of school hours and summer, and nowadays, we have off-track, and year-round schools. When my staff and I were discussing it this morning, I said, "If I really wanted to be a truant officer and catch the kids who were skipping school, I'd go to the skate park." And chances are, the kids who are skipping school would not be at the skate park, so the truant officers were going to be going there.
Wait, what happened to the rest of the queue here? It just vanished. Oh, okay. Ms. Mizakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Ms. Chick that it's appalling that we're at this state today. Members of the council, four years ago, I became interested in skate parks. I'd seen them in other cities and wondered why we didn't have them, and asked Wreckin' Park and its commission to start exploring this. And they indicated, no, they didn't, couldn't, there were liability issues, et cetera. So we got involved and started to talk to the state, which had the state-enabling legislation and other cities. And at least two or three years ago, when we started doing our research, we found that where the state had put this legislation in, and many cities in the state had adopted and had skate parks in operation, there had not been a single lawsuit brought against any municipality for a skateboard accident, or skate park accident. And it was because the state put down some rules. You have to post the premise to say that this is a hazardous activity, the kids entering the premise have to have helmets and have to have pads, and the state did have the age limit. Now, the age limit is something we recognize today is not a good thing, because no one's going to tell someone under 14 that they can't be there when they've got their skateboard and helmet and pads. I think we need to move forward. I'm really bothered that it's taken the city and the city departments who are working on this so long, and being so timid, and so hesitant, and so afraid, when in fact, this is a reality. And as Mr. Hernandez says, the reality is a lot worse not having these places than having them, because the kids and young adults who are using every other place that they can find as a hard service, and a little bit bumpy, and the rails and everything else, are much more hazardous, not only to themselves, but to the general public. My concern would be that we ought to be able to create an easy waiver system for those under 14 until the state changes it. I think we should have something like the library card, just a simple card that is issued so the kids, when we have more parks, can go elsewhere and not say, "Well, gee, my waiver's on file with this recreation park area, not another one." There's just got to be a simple card that a kid can carry, that's an ID, that's, you know, whether or not it's card swipe or whatever, it's got to just be available to the child. But we are very, very much behind the times. Other cities have them, other cities have them unfenced, other cities have them without liability problems, and we can't be so afraid of our own shadow here in the reality of what kids are going to be doing today. We have the capability, as too many of you have already indicated, that you hopped fences anyway to play where you shouldn't play. As long as there is a warning sign saying, "After these hours, there is no patrol, it's at your, you know, you shall not be here, it is a violation," then I don't think we can be held liable for it. I have no problem with a reasonable fencing, but I don't want a fencing to go in in our parks, particularly in some of our open space parks, that make the parks less inviting, that make them look more encased, prison-like. I think, as I said, for those who care to, we can look at any number of other cities that have worked with this, have worked well with this, and not had problems. I think we need to take reasonable steps. I think what is being recommended today is a reasonable step, but we've got to move forward and understand that this is something that kids today are using as recreation, and we've got to be providing it. And I applaud Ms. Chick for being the first one. I'm envious that she's the first one. I've got at least two or three others in my district that are being sought, and I'd like to see the department go ahead and not be fearful of what might happen, but do it with the cognizance of the, of good legal advice, appropriate signage, appropriate requirements, and clearly the staff that can make sure that at least minimally, these things are being enforced and run the way that they're supposed to be.
Mr. Padilla.
Let them skate. I, many of the issues and the questions that I was going to raise have already been raised, so I won't be repetitive. The only thing I will add, as something that was discussed in committee, was a desire to pursue state legislation, and it was referenced earlier, to give us a little bit more flexibility to cover us a little bit more when it came to liability. Now, it was heard on at least two occasions in committee, going back at least 30, if not 45 days or more. So my question to the staff is, what has been done up until this point with our legislative presence in Sacramento?
My, I have, don't believe the city has a position. That's why I'm suggesting today the resolution be passed to have that, so we can get Sacramento active. I don't think Sacramento...
And you said there is a bill.
But maybe not the full council, this is the first time we take it up. This is an item that's been discussed in committee, and directives were given at the committee level, so the discussions begin to take place in Sacramento. So should I interpret that we have not done that up until this point? I hope that's not the answer. If it is, if it's not the answer, then what has been taking place?
I'll need to give you a report on that. My indication, we've done some discussions with Sacramento, but...
We don't know the details of...
I don't know the details.
Okay. Is there someone we can call that can answer the question?
Ms. Chick.
You know what? It's an omen.
That's an omen. Pass me off the list.
All right. Did you want to add something further?
Yes, we're actually preparing the urgency clause right now, so if we could have a few minutes to get that, we would have something...
Wait, 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 we need that on the mic. Can you turn his mic up?
Ruth, actually...
Have you found it? Okay, here's your few minutes. Ms. Chick, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I made my request as a formal, official motion, that I move that the Department of Recreation and Parks, with the help of ORS, if necessary, come back with a full discussion of the costs and the staff resources for fencing, for any of the measures that need to be taken to make the park a responsibly-run park. Second?
Yeah. Mr. Fewer, second. Okay, Mr. Fewer, second. That, Ms. Walters, is that okay?
That's, that's fine. I think that the motion is not needed at this point, because we're going to continue to work on this, and just today, what we need is what Mr. Deaton is suggesting here.
Okay, so...
And beyond today, it will be continued, the discussion will continue in Arts, Health and Humanities Committee.
We will adopt the ordinance with the urgency clause, and then directing Wreckin' Parks to get the waivers, and then, thirdly, your resolution on the legislation on 944, SB 944 Moro, to seek legislation to lower the age limit on our liability.
To seek legislation, or is there legislation already existing?
Support, it's support of...
Support the legislation.
SB 944 Moro. League of California Cities, I understand, is supporting that bill as well.
Okay.
So three different things.
Mr. Brown has, you were about to say something about this?
Yes, if I could just speak to the ordinance, there is a version of the ordinance, as suggested by Mr. Deaton, in the council file right now. It's the one...
Until we have that urgency clause fully drafted.
Actually, the, because of my flying fingers, the clerk now has the urgency clause.
All right, good. Now, Ms. Chick's motion.
If this item continues and goes back to Arts, Health and Humanities, that the motion is directing Recreation and Parks with ORS to report to council through committee on what they need to do and the costs.
All right, so let's incorporate that into the recommendation Mr. Deaton just recited, and let's open the roll on the whole package. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved forthwith on that. Okay, I have just been handed a special, I don't know whether, Ron, have you seen the special? It's Mr. Burnson's special. And the only thing left on the agenda is the housekeeping and public comment and special one. So, members of the council, Mr. Burnson has introduced a special motion, Madam City Attorney. Have you seen it?
I actually just got this, so perhaps Mr. Burnson could speak to the findings on this.
Okay, this is to the findings, the need to act today.
Unaccustomed, as I am, to public speaking.
The clock will run, however.
Okay, thank you. Start it again, then, please.
Yeah, no, I did, go ahead.
This is very important, because this is a move by the gas company to disincentive, create a disincentive for people to install gas shut-off valves. It would call for a inspection fee, a raise in the inspection fee. It would also cut off the ability to install these meters on the gas company's side of the meter. And we need to act on this because of the PUC hearing, which the comments have to be received before April 13th. We just became aware of it. So I move that, with concurrence to the mayor, by adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles include in its 2001 to 2 legislative program opposition to allowing Southern California Gas Company to opt out of their earthquake-activated automated gas shut-off valve installation program, as well as their request to be granted permission to increase the charge for restoration of service after an earthquake valve shuts off gas, unless the CPUC allows this charge, only in the event that the valve was activated, not as a result of an earthquake. I further move the city clerk be directed to send a copy of this adopted resolution to the California Public Utilities Commission, which has requested comments on her before, pardon me, April 13, 2001.
Okay. Let's first open the roll on the findings, that the need to act arose subsequent to posting, the posting of the agenda, and that we have to act. A delay would be unreasonable. Open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that's adopted, so the motion is now before us. Anybody wish to be heard? In that case, open the roll on Mr. Burnson's motion, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is also approved forthwith on that, yes. Okay, that brings us, I believe, to public comment.
I believe there is a special two that is being distributed.
Oh, we haven't seen special two yet.
If you wish to take public comment at this time, you may.
Yeah, right. Yes, let's do public comment while we're waiting. This is the time for comments from the public on items not on today's agenda, but within the purview of the council. I have only one card to be heard, Mr. Melrose Larry Green.
Out of respect to all of you, I will not take all of the allotted time for public comment.
Thank you.
I will not take the whole 10 minutes. I won't even take half of it. But I do want to say that today is election day, and it is a great day for the city of LA. I, Melrose Larry Green, am one of the many candidates. I'm a candidate for mayor, and I hope that tonight, while you're all watching the returns on TV, many of you will be right here in City Hall. I will be right here at 7:00, watching the returns. I invite everybody from the city of LA to come down here, because cameras will be open, and it'll be open to the general public, not just to the media and to the elected officials. But what's very important is that everyone understand that everyone deserves a chance to run for office. Some of the people that are on city council today won by very narrow margins. Nobody ever asked, once you're in office, "Did you win by 100 votes or 250 votes?" But you know who I'm talking about, and you ran tough campaigns, and you won, and you were never questioning the fact that you could win. And we need to have a system where everyone has an opportunity to win an election, not just those that are funded by the independent expenditure of the Democrats, the Republicans. That's why I applaud Joel Wax for his excellent motion closing the campaign reform loophole. I applaud him, and I wish him the best of luck in today's election. But what I want to say is that we're going to have new people coming into city council July 1st. Some of you are leaving, some of you are staying, some of you are moving on to other offices. And whether we like it or not, we're going to have a new mayor. It might be a man, it might be a woman. But I want you to know that we have to all work together in the city of LA, and whoever the people of the city of LA pick as mayor, I will work with him or her. And whoever you pick for city council, I will work. But make no mistake about it, I'm going no place tomorrow. I will be an eagle, I will be a hawk, and I will monitor everything each and every one of you do, and everything that the media does, and everything that the mayor does from here on in. Because I, Melrose Larry Green, am just one of 3 million citizens in LA, and I want you all to have a simcha, as we say in Hebrew, mazel tov to Steve Soboroff and Antonio Vieragosa, and to Jimmy Hahn. And if he's the mayor, whoever's the mayor, fine, but we must all work with city council. My only regret is that James...
Mr. Green, we have somebody else who wants to be heard, too, and we only have part of the time.
My closing line. My only regret is that my friendly rivals did not see fit to come to city councils during the last four months, except for my friendly rival, Joel Wax, who has to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Stevens.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, I'd like to just make a presentation to you in reference to LAX expansion. If I can, I'd just like to give you an overview, very briefly, of what's in store for us with LAX expansion. What is being proposed is that LAX wants to come all the way to the 405 freeway, which is here. This is the 405 freeway. And coming to the 405 freeway, these little arrows that you see right here, these are airplanes. They are going to extend the runway. They propose to extend the runway under their alternative C across the Pubertate Boulevard into Parking Lot C. Parking Lot C will cease to exist. This will bring planes very close to the neighboring community of Inglewood. This changes the trajectory... This changes the trajectory of the aircraft. This means that they arrive on a lower flight path. That means that this benzene that is being spewed out of them is more of a concentrated Now, it's amazing that we have so many things going on here more important than the people who are being impacted. Benzene is a carcinogen. Benzene causes cancer. Benzene kills people. And yet, you don't seem to be caring. You are going on about your business. Miss, thank you, Ms. McCloskey, and thank you for listening, Mr. Padilla. But the bottom line is this, is that to expand this airport is unfair. Now, to give you a comparison, your counterparts in Orange County, when their constituents come to before them, and keep in mind, they do not have one school, the dots here represent schools. They only have one dot, as you see on the far side over here, only one dot, that's a school in their entire noise contour. LAX has over 64. But when they come before their city council, in Mission Viejo, these areas, South Orange County, they listen to every word they have to say with bated breath. I mean, they're just on there, pins and needles. But yet, when your constituents come before you, you carry on conversations, Mr. Benson, you carry on conversations of great importance that have nothing to do with what's before you here today. I have the floor. You should be listening to every word I have to say. I have a, I have a poster board here to show you what I'm referring to. I'm not a regular here, so you know I'm not a crackpot. I'm just a guy who lives underneath a flight path that is at your mercy, because when I, when my family purchased their property here, the planes didn't fly over us. Now they do. And if LAX expands to the 405 freeway, they're going to become lower. So with that, I just say, El Toro, yes. I hope you do the things that are necessary to keep LAX from expanding, because if they do not expand, then the rich people in South Orange County will have to carry their fair share. It's just that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period, and what do we have left?
Motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, the motions are posted and referred.
Request for excuse from council attendance. Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused on Friday, April 20th, for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Wax moves. Mr. Subornich seconds. Unanimous vote.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on Wednesday, April 11th, to arrive at 11:30. A motion is required.
How are we on a quorum?
This will bring us down to 10, if all the excuses today are approved.
Bring us down to 10. All right. In that case, Mr. Padilla moves. Unanimous vote.
Councilmember Chick requests to be excused on April 11th, to leave at noon, and April 25th, to leave at 11:30. A motion is required.
Go back to April 11th. We still okay? We're still at 10?
You're still okay with, all the excuses I have today, if they're approved, you'll have 10 members.
You'll still have 10. All right. Mr. Fewer moves. Unanimous vote.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused on June 1st for city business. This meets policy.
Hallelujah. In that case, unanimous vote.
And Councilmember Hernandez requests to be excused on May 18th, to leave at 11:30. Motion is required.
All right. Mr. Fewer moves. Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds. Unanimous vote.
The desk is clear.
All right. Do we have any adjourning motions? We do. Everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council. I'm making this motion on behalf of Councilman Nate Holden--
Wait, wait, hang on one second. It's getting a little noisy back here again. All right. Okay, go ahead.
I asked that we adjourn, Councilman Nate Holden asked that we adjourn in the name of Juanita Jacobs, who passed on April 6, 2001. Her husband, Oliver Jacobs, is the president of the 29th Place Block Club in the Jefferson Park area. Mrs. Jacobs was 62 and an active member of the block, block club. She was also a member of Grant AME Church. Services will be held this Friday at 10:00 a.m. at the House of Windsor. She's survived by her husband, Oliver Jacobs, five children, three daughters and two sons.
Anybody else? Call the roll. I'm sorry, Ms. Walters.
Madam Chair, I would ask that the council adjourn in memory of Hazel Lenore Graham, who passed away March 31. She was an entrepreneur in the Los Angeles community as co-founder and co-owner of three highly acclaimed businesses that became an important part of the Los Angeles and Inglewood city landscape. The Eat Shop, Sir Graham's, Sir Graham's, and then their barber shop and hair architects. They also had a restaurant, Sir Graham's, and it includes chains in Ladera, Fox Hills Mall, and Ballin Hills Mall. On March 20th, 2001, the Townhouse Restaurant and Lounge gave a tribute for Mr. and Mrs. Graham. They received the LA Finest Entrepreneur 40-Year Service Award. She is survived by her husband, Henry Graham, her sons, Brenton and Mark Graham, and three grandchildren.
Thank you. Call the roll. Thank you. We are adjourned. I notice everybody here already voted, but for those of you who haven't, get out and vote.